I call to order this special meeting of the Lake Mills Plan Commission for November 10. We'll proceed with a roll call.
Good evening, Mr. Homan.
Here.
Mr. Coots?
Here.
Ms. Lazarus?
Here.
Mr. Grady?
Here.
Mrs. Bishop?
Here.
Mr. Foster?
Dr. Mason?
Here.
Very good.
All right, thank you. Our next item is we go right into item number three, discussion on comprehensive plan update. And we, Plan Commission, however I see there are members of the public here who have an interest in the comprehensive plan update. I would like to afford the opportunity to comment on the comprehensive plan. And if anyone is, would like to comment before we have the presentation by our consulting planners and you may as well, and then approach the podium and give your name and address for the record. So I think we can do that at this time since you have all appeared.
I'll be the first. I got notes here. My name is Susan Trier and I'm at N 6404 Cedar Lane. And my comments are in regard to your last subject, which is the bike and pedestrian map. Okay? And basically, I would like to see protected bike lanes within the city. Routes where I see biking activity include the Glacial Drummond Trail train depot, 89 South Main Street down to downtown. Right now, there is a white stripe, which is, looks just like a parking stripe. In other cities, you might find that bike lane painted green or something else so that people realize what they're crossing over. And in a protected bike line, there would be some sort of interrupter, anything from just bumps to occasional pylons to plants to whatever. I'd also like to see something along the north side of the lake between Shorewood Hills Road and around Tyranina Park and along the to Lake Mills Market or Culvers. I saw that the city of Sumpry put up an interactive map for their residents to identify routes that they would like to see as protected bike lanes. Using such an approach would allow your own residents and active users of the city's businesses to target, you know, where they are. We're a lot smaller than Sumpry. It's more obvious where people are riding bikes. But it would be a great way to get input and make people feel like they're included. And then the last thing I wanted to say is I would like to see a goal of having a safe route for pedestrians and cyclists to circle around the lake. It's incredibly not safe watching all those strollers, joggers, and cyclists trying to enjoy the lake views. One area within the city's jurisdiction which is particularly difficult is going from the Glacial Drummond Trail to South Ferry Drive. So right now, there's no way to do it without going back up to South Main, down and around. At one point, the city indicated that a path which would also serve as an emergency access drive would be put in place when the Sandy Beach Mobile Park received its new layout and utilities, sewer and water. And I think this must be made a priority and remain within the plan for the Sandy Beach redesign. We've not seen it, you know, formally. And I really want you to press to have it on the new design. I think this would also help people access those soccer fields and the baseball softball diamonds up there as well. So, thank you.
All right, thank you, Mr. Homan. Would anyone like to speak at this time?
Good evening, Plan Commission members. Thanks for the opportunity. My name's Lisa Curler. I'm at 369 West Prospect Street. And I wanted to just briefly comment on a few items in the two chapters that you're going to be discussing tonight, both as a resident of the city of Lake Mills and also things I've heard from constituents in my role as a city council member. So, under your transportation chapter that you'll be discussing, the bicycle routes and planning, I've heard, certainly heard requests and the Public Works Board has been discussing the need for safe access from the east side of the city, Brookstone subdivision in particular, to the downtown and to the schools. So I hope you'll consider that. The 2005 was the last time the bicycle plan was updated and it, so it definitely needs an update if we're going to be looking ahead another 20 years. And it looks like the map 4B that you're discussing tonight doesn't completely sync up with that 2005 plan. So I don't know if that's intended to be an update or improvement, but it would be good to just make sure that those, those either coordinate or that there's some indication to update the plan. With respect to arteries and collectors, I think it's, the plan does a pretty good job, I would suggest, doing an even stronger job of emphasizing east-west corridors and north-south collectors. So there was just a mention about South Ferry Drive, you know, so if that's extended, that collector can help move transportation. So, again, just emphasizing to help with traffic flow, having multiple north-south and east-west collectors. Under the facilities chapter that you'll be discussing, I had the opportunity to serve on the library board over the last year as a council member. And the library board did a study that showed that, or hired a consultant who reached a conclusion that the library facilities need some expansion to serve our growing community and population. So I didn't really see any mention in the chapter about that. I don't know if it rises to the level of a goal, but I certainly think that there should be some mention that our population of the library service area is larger than the recommended size. So some expansion of facilities and services would, I think, would be a good idea. So last but not least, I'd like to talk about a community recreation center. I hear from a number of constituents and I personally believe that we should have that as a goal in our comprehensive plan. It's a 20-year time horizon. I think it's a perfectly, perfect window of time and an achievable goal to have a community recreation center here in Lake Mills, something that's centrally located, that can meet our seniors' needs, meet our children's needs, and everyone in between. The city, I think most of you are aware, the city's already invested in ad hoc committees and time and dollars, looking at the option of using the Rock Lake Activity Center for that purpose. Whether that's where it ends up or not, I think there are a lot of partnerships and opportunities for different organizations and government groups to work together to achieve that goal. So I would really encourage you to include a goal in that chapter to establish a centrally located community recreation center. Thank you.
All right, thank you, Ms. Curler.
Good evening. Thank you. I am Carol Burrows. I live at 169 West Lake Park Place. And I am here to talk about my goal in 2016, when I came before the council, was to start a senior center as our neighboring communities have. I don't think, I don't see any faces here except maybe Dan that was here maybe that night that I did that. And it was kind of a mystery for them at the time because we did not have a senior center. I don't know that it had come up. We do have the nutrition site downstairs and in the policies of the city, it does say that we are to have space for the seniors of our community. Now, the nutrition site, part of that goal is not just food, but it's to socialize and give an opportunity for people to get together and, especially those people who live alone. So from that, the council was very supportive. We did establish the ad hoc committee. And from the ad hoc committee, we talked with Strand who drew up a whole plan for transforming the Rock Lake Activity Center, which sits on almost four acres on Fremont Street. And so it seemed like a good plan. We were ready, we had worked really hard on doing that. We almost were at the point of going to referendum because of course, of course, the cost was more than $500,000 and so the city would need to go to referendum. And we went to referendum for the school district. So we did not even put our referendum out because to have two referendums at the same time would not work. From there, it just kind of pilfered and we found a spot at the community, for the community to work with the congregational church. And we developed a senior center in the lower level there. From there, we were there three years. And after that, Pam Strike, who was then the superintendent of schools, came to me and said, would you consider coming under the umbrella of the rec department with the school district? And it made a great deal of sense because we were living on donations and we were trying to look towards sustainability, towards the future. So we did do that. And with that, we moved over to the Rock Lake Activity Center, which had just made a lot of updates with the help from the city. And we've been there ever since. We did just get our accreditation, which is the sheet that I just handed out. And so we are maybe the 27th senior center in Wisconsin out of almost 200, I think it is, that is accredited. The rest are not. It was a great deal of work and two, three of the ladies behind me, two of the ladies behind me were very, very instrumental in helping that. They are on our advisory board for the senior center. And I didn't wear my shirt especially for you, but I decided to leave it on because today, November 10th, is the sixth anniversary of having our senior center for the availability of people coming in. We are, the school district, the rec department, is renting a room there. It is not ours to use free. And we do have, we've made a lot of updates, we've had a lot of help. But when we look at it, we see it's not just seniors that need a place to be. It's, we really need a community-wide, a multi-generational spot. And that seems to be the most centralized location. Where do we go from here? There was really a lot of talk and, between the school district, the foundations, and the city, and it was going along nicely. And then, you know, with the school district going to referendum, I don't know if that's what stalled things, but we did not come to a consensus on what we could do. I'm hoping that will start up again because the longer we put it off, you know, the longer we are missing those people who really need a place to be. It would also offer a venue for the city. For those of you who have been here a while, you know that we had everything that took place out at Pine Hall for many, many, many years. Now, there's really not a big enough facility to have class reunions and other things. So I'm hoping you will perhaps add that to my comment for your goal, if that becomes a goal for you. Thank you.
All right, thank you, Mrs. Burrows. Would anyone else like to comment at this time? All right, in that case, then we'll call on the consulting planners to present where we're at right now with our comprehensive plan update.
Thank you. I need to click on a couple of things to present. And I'm not sure why it's not presenting. Oh, there we go. Excellent. And this is for the benefit of people who may be watching this later. These are the materials that are on the webpage on Granite is for the, for the meeting. Again, just to schedule, I'm not going to run through this in detail. We have obviously other business to cover. I just want to make sure people know that it's there with the schedule. I do appreciate people finding the time to make this meeting happen so we can try to make up for a little bit of lost time, gain a little momentum going into the holiday season. But as you can see here, a red box outlining, we're in November, we slid a little bit, we were supposed to be talking about housing and economic development at this point. We are finishing up land use, we are into utilities and community facilities, and we are into transportation. So this will adjust, but just to kind of keep us on track. Do want to remind people, there is a public comment form available, hard copies at City Hall, online. While that's a very formal piece of paper to submit, any feedback is certainly welcome in email form to the city so it can be brought to the Plan Commission and the council for evaluation. I know that we don't get to certain items that maybe people are interested in, in the time that they'd like us to, but please submit comments now so we can make sure that they get brought into the, into the discussion. And then, of course, we ask that people attend meetings at their convenience. So we started talking last month, I guess it was last month, a couple of weeks ago, about utilities and community facilities. There are brief overviews in this, in this presentation. Like I said, I'm not going to walk through them. We wanted to walk through the red line a little more today. And again, that red line is, of course, available online for people to review as well. And with that, I'm going to switch over so we can talk about the red line. The first part of the red line, which is a challenge to look at on a screen, I realize, for people, is the background information about facilities in the community, existing conditions, current conditions and such. We've populated it with some comments and such that we've received, some minor changes as some of the public provides us with some clarification on some things. Sometimes they certainly know more than we do about certain details. We want to make sure that we're reflecting them properly in here. The utilities and community facilities chapter functions with a number of other documents. So the comprehensive plan is pretty high level and there are other studies that have been mentioned that the community has undertaken over the years from, there's a bike, there's a pedestrian plan, there's a transportation plan, there's a comprehensive outdoor recreation plan that we have. So all of those documents go into a lot more detail than we really get into in the comprehensive plan. That being said, we try to reflect for the reader kind of existing conditions. And we talk about park facilities and lake access points and such. But we do have an added bullet about the Rock Lake Activity Center that wasn't in the document specifically. This bullet is really just kind of saying that it exists and kind of what it is. It does not go into a lot of detail about it, but there is that opportunity and it is an important discussion point that we've highlighted in this plan, kind of in a later chap, part of the chapter. We had very good feedback from the civic groups during the focus groups about the Rock Lake Activity Center and kind of like where it stands and how it's being utilized and what should happen to it in the future. And there seems to be a lot of question marks related to that. What we did here, and just for those at home, we did put the, with this meeting, the focus group summaries again, just to make sure that they're fresh for people to go back and review. But one of the key things that came out of this is how should we be talking about the Rock Lake Activity Center and the various organizations that utilize it? One of the things that came from them was more involvement from the city in relation to it and more coordination between the school district and the city in relation to the Rock Lake Activity Center. I have very much simplified that because it's a complex, it's a complex issue, but it's obviously very important to the community. And so I ask, how should we be addressing it in this plan, knowing its importance to the community? And that there's a lot more to that issue than a simple sentence or two.
Susan, have a question?
It is.
Plan commissioners and staff, we do have people, members of the public here who are familiar with the Rock Lake Community Center. One thing I would advise that we could put that into the plan is that there might be, and perhaps they have already done this, I don't know, but if they have, that would be very valuable, that studying other models and other communities of how activity centers are funded and managed because, you know, there's always seems to be some combination of, of school district and city. And how much of each varies and sometimes it's all of one or all of the other. But I think it would be of interest to bring that forward because, you know, I don't know, but that might be something that would be valuable. And I know that there's a group that, a focus group that needs to talk about the prospects and future of the Rock Lake Activity Center. And that might be something they want to attend to. But I have not reached the extent of my, any expertise I ever had concerning this matter, so I will become silent and others may speak.
I have a couple of comments. First of all, I'd like to thank all the people that showed up tonight. A lot of the stuff that we do, we do based on things that we hear and then end up making decisions. And it's a nasty road the other way of ridicule and whatnot. This way, we can actually use people's comments and, and focus on this, on this comprehensive plan. However, just if you play back the tapes and the record, I'm kind of a comprehensive plan basher because I was involved with the last one. And generally speaking, it's been a, it's kind of been a wish list of hopes and dreams that we'd like to have, but primarily developer-driven. In this particular case, because it's facilities-oriented, you know, maybe there are things that, based on, you know, help with Dan and whatnot, but we have, in some of these developments, we have parkland dedication. And instead of creating another park that we can't take care of at times, maybe we can take some of those fees in lieu of and potentially work with, you know, redirect some of those funds and actually incorporate this into the comprehensive plan and see if we can get something rock solid that actually happens down the road. Because there's, you know, involvement. I mean, just this evening alone, we have three, three of the five city council members that ultimately will have to work on funding. And this just might be an idea to, you know, to help make that work if it's a way to redirect funds down the road with some cooperation potentially between the school system and whatnot. So anyway, sure appreciate your comments.
I like those comments by Mr. Homan. I have written them down. Very good. Yes?
I know it's not, I know that Cambridge, I'm not sure about Cambridge, but Fort Atkinson, Jefferson, and Watertown are all entities of the city and have been for many years. For senior center, yes.
For the senior center? For the senior center you mentioned or for an activity center?
No, it's just the senior center.
Okay.
I don't know how Cambridge has done a little differently.
So in the recommendations chapter, and that's what I'm kind of showing on the screen here, you know, we've added, because we've heard it regularly as an input item, that the civic organizations around the community want more involvement and commitment from city elected and appointed officials in participating. And I know there's some that they already are on and whatnot, so I guess I'm kind of painting a broad brush there. Just civic organizations want more, more involvement from city decision-makers. And so we've added a bullet, I guess, to that end that talks about that the city councils should identify liaisons or, or representative for civic facilities. That's kind of one piece of it, right? And that certainly can be wordsmithed a little bit more. But the other is, should there be something specific to the Rock Lake Activity Center that should come out of here as an action item? Again, I know that, as Carol mentioned, the study that was done by Strand, that had to be six, seven, five only about taking over the, the building. Is that something that needs to be revisited? Is, is a new facility something? Again, sometimes comprehensive plans are just plans to plan. So we can't really get into the minutia of, of that, but it's obviously an important facility for the community. The city currently has fiscal responsibilities to it. The school district takes care of programming by and large.
There is an ad hoc committee that is going to, as I understand it, meet again. They're going to get together further in the future to continue discussion of the feasibility and future of the Rock Lake Activity Center. So that would be, I think, the avenue that would come back to us and we don't have that today.
Sure.
But that, that would, I would say feed into our comprehensive plan in that way.
Would some language in here, again, forgive me if I trip over a few words, but some language, the effect of the city will prioritize further study and action related to the Rock Lake Activity Center, its future for that site or future sites? What would you like to see?
I, I was thinking something along those lines, but instead of it saying the city will prioritize, it could still say that, but I think it's, it'd probably be important with whatever we're putting in that members of the community have expressed an interest in expanding, you know, the role of the Rock Lake Activity Center.
Okay. So comment on that and then?
But making it a point that, you know, community members have expressed an interest in this.
And that this become a community priority?
Yeah.
Okay.
I'm sorry. Go ahead, go ahead. This is something kind of.
I was just going to add on to your statement, say, Rock Lake Activity Center and/or a more comprehensive community recreational facility.
Okay.
Instead of just calling it Arlac, because this is a recommendation, I think it should be more general. And then if we want to talk more about Arlac's role specifically, we should do that in previous portions of this chapter.
Okay. And we certainly can add to that, to that section about kind of what that facility does and how it operates, certainly.
Maybe our guests, our fellow, sorry, Club 55 folks and Rock Lake, and what you've heard and talking to the community, I'm just curious what the gap is between what is and what the vision is. Like what I'm hearing is there's more arts, health and fitness, more vibrance maybe, but like, I'm curious about what that gap is. Is it, is it a whole new facility? Is it a, is it bigger? Is it like, we ever roll around to get a new school, like having a space in that place? Like, you know, I'm wondering what the, what the gap is.
Mr. Grady, the other thing I'm hearing you say and that I think of with your comment is with the gap, what services do we want a community recreational facility to provide? We have the Club 55 that's very active and driving some of this, but do we also want to provide daycare services, a gym, karate classes, dance classes? What does that look like for our community and what should be provided in a facility like this?
So we can certainly add language at things. So, we can certainly add language at things, that's something that needs to be determined, it obviously isn't going to come out of this process, but, um, but knowing what programming needs, I can't speak to the condition of the facility or what facility improvements are necessary. Dollars, of course, get attached to that, uh, which was part of the Strand, uh, study, um, but, but certainly we can have more language in this document about the, um, desire for the community to have, uh, to, to vault this up the, uh, the priority list.
I have one more question.
This issue, not necessarily the Rock Lake Activity Center.
I have one more question, Dustin. In, 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 uh, somewhere else also in the plan, could you put some connective tissue, um, so that, like, I just met with a business this month, and they'd like to do something with, with some notoriety for the community, and this could, you know, potentially be something, some kind of connective tissue where it helps redirect them to the, uh, place in the comprehensive plan where they can get those kind of ideas, or, or specifically?
Well, as Ms. Proz had mentioned, there really isn't a lot of activ, uh, event space in the community, um, you do rely a lot on the civic buildings, uh, for that, but, uh, there are smaller private entities that have, have space, but not, not much. Is that, is that the kind of thing you're thinking about?
No.
Is it an evaluation? I'm not, I guess I'm not understanding.
No, 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 in the plan, in the plan. A, a place in the plan, not, the, where, where, where people can go and actually understand the plan, you know, and potentially work with someone if they have an idea to, to, if they have funds, that they'd like to do something of substance, have something in this plan that they, that actually a existing business could, could look at our comprehensive plan and say, this is what the people have spoken, and this is, this is one thing that, that, you know, we really could use as part of our, our, uh, plan moving forward, so that it's, you know, right now, they were just wondering, what could we do, literally? And now that we're developing this plan, you know, get some language in there that, that actually openly says that we're looking for, you know, additional development or redevelopment of our existing, existing facility or, or whatever, so that people can be directed, I guess.
Uh, yeah, we can certainly.
With clarity, you know, with more clarity.
We can certainly add language that says, you know, if, if the path is to expand the Rock Lake Activity Center, that that's a, a wonderful civic investment opportunity. I mean, it is on four-odd acres, and it does have a lot of real estate if it needed to expand as a facility, um, and we can certainly comment on the need for, I'll say, I'm using kind of meetings, meeting space or civic space and private event space, we can certainly talk about that those are, kind of, I'll say, known gaps in the community, is that what you're thinking?
Yeah, something, something of substance. I just can't, I, I just sit here, meeting after meeting, be so frustrated because I've been through this, and historically, these comprehensive plans, I, I, they're hard to understand, they're just, you know, it's our, it's, it's, it's others, other than the people in the, in the audience, hopes and dreams, however, it never happens. So, in, you know, we can want all this stuff, but it's frustrating to me to, to never have a, an end to game.
Wait, Ms. Rem, this is one of those places where you and I align perfectly on comprehensive planning. It was mandated by the state twenty years ago that everybody has to do this, and it's a general plan about everything instead of a specific plan about specific areas, right? And that's, I think, one of the challenges to it, um, and, and I, and I, it's a very leading cause of frustration because it says a lot of things, but it doesn't drill down in certain areas, right?
That, you know, that's why, that's why I put up such a, a fuss, and I'm, I'm trying to, you know, hold back emotion, because, um, I guess I would rather have us finish the comprehensive plan and then have an agenda item that says, let's talk about the Activity Center, and then we actually can, you know, discuss, debate, work on things, and get something accomplished. I just, I just like to see results.
Let me echo what, um, Steve said, a little bit. To me, we've got all kinds of projects out there in this city, and like Sandy Beach, like the Activity Center, like, uh, dredging of Millipon and so on, and they like come and go. We talk about them a little bit, and then they like disappear. And what we need to do, I think, is focus or prioritize these things and see them through from the beginning to the end, instead of talking and, and, you know, going over, and the Activity Center is another good example of it.
I, I don't disagree with you on that, um...
And that's not your bailiwick necessarily, that's...
It is, it is a challenge.
That's the city council, that's the city manager, you know, we need to get organized and get some priorities going here.
Their new strategic plan certainly identifies, like Sandy Beach is a priority in the, um, strategic, strategic plan that was, uh, adopted, I think, in early summer, um, thereabouts. Kind of looking at Ms. Bishop on that for the timing, I think it was in that timeframe, though. So, yes, this talks a little bit about everything, but when it gets to prioritizing, I think this is a helping influence on prioritizing, because again, you're bringing in input from a variety of groups and trying to, to put your finger on the things that are most important to them, um, and hopefully that does lead to action items of where the councils should be expending the, um, time, energy, and resources of, of city government. The other piece of this that's important to understand, and, and I think the Rock Lake Activity Center and Club 55, and the civic groups at large really embody this, everything can't be a city responsibility, right? It needs what I'll call, you know, public and quasi-public and, and private partnerships to make them go, right? But you're right, it, it, it can't be scattershot, it's gotta be, it's gotta be focused, but it takes these organizations to make that happen. So, we do in the plan want to highlight what's important to the public, we want to highlight what's important to the business community, we want to highlight what's important to, 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 to city, to the city, but yes, to Mr. Holman's point, and, um, it, it sadly doesn't get into the nitty-gritty of being able to make specific decisions. So, with that, I, I don't want us to get too far off task and take up the whole night on this thing. My takeaway on this issue is, talk about the importance that the public has brought to us on this, on this issue, talk about that this is something, that is a, that should be a priority of the community on what type of facility and programming will be necessary in the future, and what mechanisms potentially could help spearhead making this happen, funding-wise. Does that encapsulate it?
Yeah, it, it does. What I would, what I would do is that I would, uh, highlight things at the beginning of the comprehensive plan and at the end of the comprehensive plan. In the executive summary, I would pull forward the, um, the most, um, you know, what came through strongly through public comment and discussion. I, I'd highlight those things at the beginning in the executive summary, and then you can always direct the reader to, and the public, all the public comments are summarized in this appendix. At the back of the comprehensive plan, there should be a list, an annual list that changes every year, and it could be the priority action list, and it, and it's reviewed. What we should do, once this is passed, is to sit down and say, what priorities should we focus on in the next year? And it could be a priority list for implementation of various, uh, particular goals and objectives in the comprehensive plan, and that's where, you know, what do we want to focus on and, and how can we proceed? So, in the beginning and at the end.
Thank you for bringing that. There absolutely be an implementation chapters, there always have been. It will highlight, um, by, uh, I'll say generally by chapter, by issue, you know, um, the, the key takeaways and action items, and then identifying timeframes for action, uh, next steps for action, uh, and a, and a champion, or champions for action, so, because that's just as important. Rather than just having a laundry list, we, we need, we need champions, inside city hall and outside city hall, right? So...
But, thank you. I think that's right, that's exactly what I'm looking for. I think in this situation, it would be like, really understanding what the, and the champion would be at the nonprofit, like, what is the vision? And then also, what do they, what do you, I think it's for, for the, to talk about down the road, so I'm not feeling the best, um, but to think about, like, who is the person there that can drive it, and, um, and then what's our relationship here? Because it's, I don't know, I don't even know what the, it is a nonprofit at the Rock Lake, right? So, what's, do, do we want the city to be involved? I gotta imagine there's a negative part to that, too, that people might not want. So, like, that conversation I love to have down the road, and I think what you just said is you're gonna do that.
Okay.
Yeah, to go along with Mr. Grady's comment, then, uh, obviously there'll be council members that could bring, like Lisa, that could bring a passion to the city council, and we could come back and, uh, show support at one of their meetings and listen to their debate and then get behind one of their projects.
Right on. If you want to invite me to that, I would love to be there.
So, again, there is language in here in one of the bullets that we've added about representation, and again, that language could be tweaked, it was kind of first, first pass added about, um, aligning, um, people from inside city hall to these organizations so they have, you know, just as Ms. Bishop is the council representative on the plan commission, that there would be council or, you know, elected appointed official representatives as a part of the civic organizations that want to have them as a part of this, of those, um, decision-making bodies, right? That doesn't mean that will, that, just because we deem something doesn't make it so, but to, to say that we're encouraging that, um, so you have, so the inside city hall does have, um, a, is hearing directly from civic organizations rather than just being reported to, so, um, so that is in there. If we're good, I'm gonna kind of progress along. Yes, I'm, I'm all ears, I just trying to mindful time.
No, so, something different and much less exciting, but it's back on page three, so before we move past that, um, the paragraph underneath the Rock Lake Activity Center bullet point, uh, the one that talks about adopting the, uh, comprehensive outdoor plan, um, we've redlined the park impact fee study, but then the rest of the paragraph makes numerous references to the study, um, just that that paragraph may need to be cleaned up and refer only to the plan and not to the study at this point.
Typically, when we update the park and open space plan, we do update the park and open space impact fees associated with it, but that is not the only impact fees that the city certainly has, um, so we will double-check all of that.
See, I told you, much less exciting.
Mr. Wolf, we jumped straight to recommendations specifically for Arlac in this chapter. Did you have room tonight or in your presentation to go over just any other comments for this chapter?
Well, we, we did, I just, it was kind of the priority with people being in the, in the audience, we wanted to make sure that we were talking about it.
Okay, I don't want to jump your timeline for tonight, but I did have other comments throughout the chapter, so...
No, let's, let's absolutely go through that.
Okay, um, so for me, starting, you know, at page one, this chapter is weird to me because it seems to try to mash utilities, municipal services, parks, and civic organizations all into one. So, thinking about that, um, for the city administration paragraph on the first page, where it talks about, um, the community room, which is available for use by various community organizations, I think we need another sentence to talk about how there are, um, rooms and facilities available within this municipal building for private rental. And maybe just a capstone sentence there, and then I'd like to address it in a later paragraph on the next page, so I'll get to that. Um, for the fire and emergency medical services on this page, Brian, if I'm going too fast, stop me. We only talk about fire here, which, that's because we have a concrete department. If we want to say anything about medical services, um, I think we need to say, you know, thus far, medical services have been provided by Lake Mills EMS, and currently the city is staffing a study to, um, talk about other options, and we can just leave it at that, but I do think if we're gonna have that in the header, we need to address it. So, those were my comments for the first page. And then I know Ms. Curler had a couple of comments in her, um, public comment portion about the library. I didn't have anything personally to add, but if we add anything that she said, that's fine with me.
Ms. Bishop, did you have more?
I did.
Okay.
Okay, second page, I was waiting for Brian.
Yep.
Uh, second page for Bartles Beach, I think it's important to mention that we do have ADA, um, accessible equipment. For Sandy Beach, um, the language about the seasonally operated restaurant leased to concessionaires outdated. Obviously, we've been talking about Sandy Beach plans, but we can say, you know, food service, the city strives to provide food service here, or leave it pretty general since we have had, um, food trucks over the last couple of summers. And I'm not trying to hijack this, so I want the rest of the commission to jump in or add things as I'm talking, if that's okay?
You're doing fine.
Brian's still going, or Dustin, maybe you're taping, okay?
Yeah, bear with me, I don't type fast.
That's okay. Okay, food service.
We'll clean it up later.
Um, for Memorial Park, I don't recall there being horseshoe pits, that's really small, um, so I just had that highlighted, so I don't know if that was a carryover from a different paragraph. And then for Wallace Park, um, it says it's currently undeveloped, and that is not correct since we do have the, uh, ball fields there, there's the trail along with the book, I don't know what you call it, what's the book thing?
Storyboard.
The storyboard. Um, so I wanted to talk about the storyboard, the nature trail, the playground, and the softball diamonds. And, uh, you actually said, oh, plans include, yeah, so I think we can just take out plans include and talk about what's there. And then later on, we did have plans include moving another diamond there, I think, splash plaid skate park, so we do talk about future recommendations already later on. That's all I had for that page. Okay, um, I'm on page three. So, for the other parks, public open space and facilities for the Glacial Drumland Trailhead, um, we talk about South CP Ave here. I think we should also just have a sentence about the trailhead at, um, on South Main with the depot. We mentioned in, in other parts and in the, uh, transportation section, but not here. And then, under the Rock Lake Activity Center here, since we're talking about facilities, I would also like to add a sentence or two, um, expanding more on the facilities available in this building for rental and for civic use. That was all I had for page three. Um, I can jump all the way down to page six. And it's, let's see, page six, um, that first real paragraph there under the exhibits, the referendum, uh, proposing the addition of the middle school. If we leave that last sentence in, I think we need to say intermediate school. My proposal would be to take that whole last sentence out, especially since it didn't pass.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Okay. So, that was my comment there. For page seven, oh, sorry.
We may need to have a comment... We may need to have a comment in here about the school district and then the need for future facilities.
Sure.
But, the, the referendum specifically would come out, yes.
Okay, yeah, and I'm okay, you know, and you do talk about, you know, the increased, um, enrollment over the last 10 years, and so that would lead you to think there might need to be facility, um, improvement or increases, but if we wanna say that, that's fine, I would just leave it more general. Um, moving to page seven, so though, the header for that, if we wanna have a 20-year time span, that's fine, but the actual information in the chart is only from 2001 to 2010, so what I would like to see is 2011 to maybe 2019 or whatever is most available.
I'm sorry, the bottom?
It's the second row.
I was making sure.
Oh, I missed that. Oh, I'm sorry.
Okay, I just wanna make sure that it was showing up.
Yeah, no, you know what, I only looked at the first chart, and I said, oh, those dates are off, so.
Okay.
I apologize.
Might be valuable to, rather than showing each year, just maybe generalize to maybe five-year increment or something, so that it shows up in a simpler table than all 20 years.
Or, or we can just have a table, detailed table on the last 10 years, and then put a growth, like a chart that shows over 20 years?
So, was the thought process on doing 20 years, what?
It's, uh, generally speaking, you know, this plan is for 20 years, so the idea is to associate, you know, growth over the last 20 years with what potentially could be, you know, moving forward. And just to make sure we're not showing for individual peaks, you know, um, based on population growth in those peaks.
I'm okay with this chart then.
Okay.
Okay, I think that's representative, so that's fine. I just misread it, I was going quickly. For, okay, this is an interesting topic, for healthcare services and childcare services. I don't know if this should go as a section in this, um, chapter, or maybe the housing chapter, but last meeting, a constituent brought up to me that there's really nothing in the city for, like, disabled adults or support group homes for adults that aren't seniors. And so, um, it was just a note that I wanted to make sure I brought up at this meeting, because we do talk about, again, healthcare services and childcare services. So I don't know if, like, the support home is a adult service, or if it needs to go back somewhere else, so.
I understand what you're saying. I'm wondering if it would be more aligned with housing needs, but that doesn't mean, when we start talking about housing, that we might feel that it, something needs to be added here as a, as a service. There are a couple CBRFs that are on, uh, on Owen, um, that provides, but very limited, so.
Okay, yeah, and I don't know unfortunately enough about that topic. I just, since it was brought up to me, I wanted to put it out there in this group, so.
Sure.
Um, I don't have a solution for how to address that yet. Okay, um, moving on, for me to page eight.
Real quick while we were there, Mr. Coates had asked for, um, some language about childcare, and so we had added some relatively general language about it.
Yes.
To make sure about highlighting the issue, um, and I just wanted to make sure that he saw that we put in it.
Yeah, no, I saw that, thank you, thank you.
Okay.
So, Mr. Coates, I had a point on that, because the section on childcare does start talking about, this is on page eight, uh, second paragraph, the Wisconsin Department of Children and Families provides comprehensive information. I felt like that was so broad to what our city comprehensive plan needs to discuss. So my recommendation was to take out that paragraph, um, but maybe then that leaves the section too lean, so, um, I, that was just my thought, to take it out, but if you like it, Mr. Coates, or if somebody else wants to keep it, that's fine.
Let me ask, I, I thank Mr. Coates for kind of pushing us a little bit on this one, because I do think that's really good information for someone who is looking for childcare services that are licensed and registered with the state, and they conduct, and that's what that program is about, um, their own evaluations on those facilities, uh, to meet certain criteria, so, um, if you are looking for, uh, childcare services, it is a great jumping off point. Uh, and there's so much more information available, um, about, if you're looking for very specific type of services, back to your point on somebody with developmental disabilities, et cetera, that you can winnow in to find those facilities and see how they are, um, evaluated by the state, um, on a ranking system.
Okay, so if you think that that provides somebody with more information to find the service they want in the city, then leave it. I just, I wasn't sure, because it seemed so broad.
Yeah, our takeaway from it was maybe we shouldn't be listing those places, because they, because they ebb and flow, and when you have a plan spinning around for a number of years, but that information is constantly current. So, I think it's, I think it is good information to have there.
No, that's fine, then that makes sense to me.
Dustin's super nitpicky.
Yeah.
It's WC, it's WDCF. Two of the letters got transposed when you short, did the shorthand in there. Department of Children and Family, not Children Department Family.
Yeah, I, I type those when I type, so.
Oh, yeah, no, I don't. I don't, but you know, I, I thought that was great, that, that resource was there and pointing them to that state, you know, the, the website and that state resource, that's perfect.
Um, also on page eight, area cemeteries replatted, is that two Ts? Or one? I didn't spell check it myself, but the city has since re, says plated. Middle of the paragraph, yeah, you got it.
I'm sure you will do some copy editing. Final draft here.
I know, you'll do a final spell check, okay. And then we talked about Arlac, I had nothing, I'll, I'll be quiet now for this chapter.
No, not at all. So, there aren't wholesale changes in the goals, objectives, uh, listed here. Again, they are pretty broad about things, it doesn't mean certain ones can't be added, but we felt, with some of the minor edits that we've added, that they've, they kind of reflected what came out of, uh, the survey and the focus groups, about what people want, prioritizing, um, connections, um, the importance of park and open space facilities. Again, there's a section that is really gonna direct you to the comprehensive outdoor rec plan, because that's really where you get into all the, the detail of that. It was important to hear about some of the library things that should be added, certainly, certainly agree there. I think the policies are important in the sense that, um, we're trying to follow these as a community, and so if you feel that we're being, that the policies are obligating us to stuff that we aren't going to do or aren't really priorities, we should be addressing those, but based on the feedback we've gotten today, that seem, they seem to still hold, hold true. The, the details is programs and recommendations, if you feel that there are things that we that need more dedicated space to discuss. Many things in this chapter really go to future studies, and so I think the stuff on, on Rock Lake, but, but, a community center-type facility, I think that, yes, it needs more, more discussion here, a- about it as a priority, and, and what is gonna be recommended as next steps, which the city's undertaking. It's hard to decide what should be added for public schools, um, because they obviously undertake considerable study of their facilities and needs. So, you know, we try to encompass them in the, in the general sense, but, um, I didn't know if there's anything in here that you, that you wanted specifically, and the same goes for utilities. We know that the city has been undertaking considerable, um, evaluation of, of future wastewater treatment plant. Really, all you can do in here is kind of talk about that, and kind of leave it as its own study, because there's so many moving parts to that. And, and again, it's not silver bullet, just, it's expand, or is it new facility, is it, right, so, is there anything in here you felt that was missed? From recommendations or feedback from the public, from the focus groups, that?
This might be misplaced, um, but the, I'm curious about this new school that didn't pass, right? And like, if it's like the cart before the horse, like, can you develop? Will, will people invest in developing some of these areas, on the south side and north side, if they know there's no capacity for more students in these schools? Or do they need the school to be built before they go ahead and do that? Like, I, I, I'm, I'm curious about, um, how this works, and if that needs to go in here. I know it's a big political issue, and it's a lot of-
Referendums are such an interesting, you know, issue as to why they may or may not have passed. I did not look at the details on kind of impact to average property, I don't know what this, I don't know what the school district did. Usually they have a big kind of, um, public informational push about them, I don't know what they did. Around the community, I saw a handful of signs saying, vote yes on the referendum, I saw many more saying, vote no on the referendum.
I guess my question is just more, is, is that how development typically happens? Or is it like, no, people will come, and then this, then there'll be overcapacity in schools, and then they'll build the new schools, and response to overcrowding is reactive, or is it proactive?
I, I can't say it's chicken or egg, I mean, it's, your school system, any community school system is obviously a significant draw to it, is one of many reasons why people, right, quality of life, um, ability to raise their children, right? There's a lot of things that go into the mix as to why people wanna be in a specific community. You know, for some, it may be, Lake Mills is halfway between Milwaukee and Madison, and, you know, one works one way, works the other. I can't say there's a silver bullet associated with it. The schools know their business better than we ever will. And I'm, you know, I, I would imagine they're going to be revisiting this issue, because it doesn't just go away. They undertake considerable, um, study on growth of their entire district and their needs, so, while housing has been, you know, here has been relatively flat, it hasn't been in other parts of the district. And it's been picking up here, so, maybe it's an item where it just wasn't destined to pass this time, and it might be revisited in the next, you know, year or two, because that, unless you have a significant drop-off in enrollment, which we're not seeing, the problem doesn't go away, it's just, was it well articulated? I, I don't know.
No, I guess my only question was, if, if we talked about taking that out of the, the fact that the referendum was on the, and if, if it should stay in there to say that this was a concern, then it will likely be a concern down the road.
If the referendum had passed, we would have had language a little more detailed about what the plan was for that. We will now probably tweak it to be, the school district has identified this need. If that makes sense.
Yeah, that's thanks.
Yeah, I think you can say something like, you know, they maintain land on the south side of the city, and, you know, plans to do something with that are always being discussed, or something, that it does address it.
Yeah, that, for their services, they identified, I think it was grades three through five in that area, right, to, to be served there, so we will have more language on what they've identified the goal for that piece of property is, but we wouldn't talk about the referendum having failed, because four years from now, it's not gonna matter. Anything else on this chapter? Just because we move on from it does not mean we can't revisit it. There were things that are gonna come out of other chapters, say, oh, we need to make sure that that is effectively addressed in, in, in another chapter elsewhere, so I don't want you to think that we're just putting it, putting it behind us, um, but if there's nothing else, we'll switch gears for a second?
Dustin, could I ask about something, something different again?
Of course.
Could we bring up the, the bicycle and pedestrian map?
Absolutely, thank you. You're right, we should, so, previous, the previous map for, for this chapter had a lot of information on it, and we're gonna be talking about it more in transportation as a, as a unit, so we felt it was more appropriate to talk about bike ped things in the transportation chapter as a multimodal issue, rather than just, yes, it is a community facility component, but we are talking about it in more detail in transportation. Nobody else sees that this-
Sorry, I was, I, I'm sorry, I was getting confused between the two. Well, sorry, it, it, it's on the, uh, it's on the bicycle map, it's not on the road, I see why now. The, the, the bikes were at the back of that, uh, property, the school district property on the south side leading up to St. Paul's. It was on one of the maps, but not the other, other version of the map, and I see why now. It's a path, not, not the actual bike trail.
Yeah, so one of the challenges that we have with, with the maps is, I think the last plan tried to show too much information on every map. It was all important information, but it felt like you couldn't discern anything. So, in the transportation chapter, we have two maps, one's that's focusing on road networks and road hierarchies, and, you know, future roads, and one that is on, um, I'll see, the, the more significant, um, bicycle or pedestrian routes. And distinguishing between kind of existing and proposed. And, and knowing that, yes, there is a detailed pedestrian, pedestrian plan, and a detailed transportation plan.
Yeah, no, no, I'm sorry, I just, I, I was getting the two maps confused, I thought it should be represented, and it is, I was just looking at the wrong spot, so thank you for pointing that out, I appreciate it. I got, I got nothing else, I'm sorry.
At a certain scale, it's too hard to discern all the line work.
Yeah.
Um, Mr. Wolf, a couple of these places, we have the purple dotted line on County V, and then we have the orange line on Lake Street that cuts through. I guess that's Town of Adeslin, that little island that is not the city. Do we still maintain that portion of the road, and that would enable us to put, um, bike paths on those two areas? Or how do we justify putting a bike path there if we don't, if that's not in our jurisdiction?
Future growth, future need, there might be grant opportunities, again, it is in public right-of-way, so, um, we always wanna be looking at our growth areas, and we do wanna do what's best for the system. So as things develop over time, that we have earmarked, um, the need for this infrastructure.
And what I add, there will be an intergovernmental chapter, so, you know, there's always opportunity for collaborating on something.
Actually, that, um, no, no, I see it.
So, with that, we can jump back to the maps at, at any point in time. But getting into the text a little bit, of course, the first part is background, um, existing conditions, et cetera. It does talk about the functional classification system, which does align with the, um, map 4A here, uh, which is the roadway network. It's important to know that the DOT relies on the functional classification system, grants rely on the functional classification system considerably, uh, and what you're remarking. So, in there, arterials, collectors, and then of course, local, local streets. So when we look at this map, um, obviously you have, certain arterials are, um, 89 and 94. Right, dashed are future roads, collectors are generally the yellowish-orange, if you can see that. And so dashed, we, we know we're gonna have some future collectors up on the north side development. There have been discussions, of course, of extending CP Avenue. There was, uh, um, the, the transportation plan from 045 shows kind of realignment of County A and the Mud Lake Road, and, um, and the extension of Untaven through. So, again, long, long-range things, there are things that were, and we'll talk about in a second, that were recommended, that we need to know if we're gonna keep them in the plan or not. There was a question about, um, the ferry drive extension through the, uh, Mobile Home Park that the city owns, when that redevelops, and of course, that's, of course, intended to connect through- And of course, that's, of course, intended to connect through, obviously for bike peds, but especially for public safety, police fire, alternative routes, if there's something blocking 89. And these things went through a lot of discussion when the 89 construction project was being planned and then obviously happening. But, so that's where the network comes from. That doesn't mean that there aren't other roads that are going to be coming in. But this is showing, generally you're focusing on your larger collectors. Because as development occurs, that road network will get added, that local road network will get added. We don't try to predict that. So just jumping back to our document. General discussion about what are collectors, what are the county trunks, what are the local roads? The, we don't have rail, we just indicate we don't have rail in the conversion to the Glacial Drumland. You don't have air, but it's in proximity. Pretty fortunate, you're only like 25 minutes from Dean County International, as I call it. We fly to Canada. I joke, we work for the airport. But a lot of discussion on bike and ped, right? Because that really came out from, focus groups that came out from the community survey to prioritize bike ped facilities. Actually, we heard tonight from people who took time to come to the meeting about them. And it has certainly been something that Airtime has been working with some members of public and brought forward about some specific routes, perhaps. So we do try to prioritize and greater discussion of bike and ped facilities. Paths and on-street are on-road facilities, right? Paths are great because they are separated from the vehicles. They're not always practical everywhere. You do have a sidewalk system that is required with development. Multi-use paths are obviously wider, but we can't put them everywhere, even though it's certainly desired as much practical. On-street facilities, depending upon the road type, is not meant for all users. It is something to be mindful of. But 89 was reconstructed and it was mentioned, well, they only have some stripes on the sides. Well, that's what the DOT will do. But to evaluate whether or not they should be colored, City of Madison certainly does that. Other communities do that to highlight them. It's something to be explored. The discussion of bike boulevards and specific bike routes, and maybe Brian will want to jump in here. This has become very popular with a lot of communities, is which roads are we really going to be directing? You know, talk about east-west or north-south routes. Maybe not every route has to be to the same level. Maybe we can start directing them, saying, these are the routes that we are going to prioritize certain bike ped improvements in, above and beyond others. Not that others won't be able to be utilized, but maybe Brian can talk a little more about the bike boulevard.
Yes, ultimately, it's, I'm not sure how familiar each of you are, but bike boulevard really is, it's a good opportunity to provide facilities at a relatively low, you know, cost in terms of infrastructure because it's pavement marking and education for the community. It sort of provides that last leg connection a lot of times between a dedicated path and the bike lanes. They're going to be located most typically on a local road and those kind of connections. And really, they're the bread and butter of a bike system, I believe, because I think they do provide that kind of last leg. So you can have your dedicated paths, but kind of getting there and making sure that you're dedicating, you know, the same opportunity to bikes on these roads as motor vehicle. Obviously, low speed roads, low volume roads, but I think they're a good opportunity within that system.
Some that may jump out for exploring is like a ferry drive. Again, the idea is to make it known that bikes are going to be as equally welcome on here as a vehicle is, and that you should expect to see bicycles traveling on that. Lake Street, of course, jumps out at us, but it's easy to say that when you're kind of in the in-town section, as you start getting out towards the east end, and it is a county route, that maybe, you know, maybe some of the facility wouldn't work for that. Or travel speeds get pretty high as you start going eastward in the community, as you start kind of leaving the denser area of the community. But the goal there again is to look at highlighting them. There may be some recommendations here, but this is an area that will take certainly further study. Public Works Board is obviously going to want to weigh in on this considerably. Public's going to want to weigh in on this considerably. So I don't want it to seem like we're going to make that decision here, but we do want to elevate the discussion and the opportunity for these types of facility improvements.
So the discussion about bike paths seems a little bit to me to be all over the place in this chapter. And I only think that's because there are so many options that you can implement. And we haven't, as a city, picked a way forward, or we haven't combined these options. So my first question is, are share-o and bike boulevard the same thing in this conversation in this chapter?
Yes, and based on, as far as bike facilities, yes, they're the same.
Okay, so the share-o or bike boulevard, and when we say bike boulevard marking, that's really a marking on the road to provide education and awareness to mostly vehicular traffic, that this roadway is shared with bicyclists, meaning that bicyclists can operate in that lane, the same as vehicular traffic?
That's correct.
Okay, got it. I wanted to make sure I understood that because in part of this discussion, and I didn't highlight the exact language, reading it seemed, you could read it one way that a bike boulevard was only for bicyclists. And that could have just been, like, when I read it the first time, I didn't fully understand. So we need to make it very clear here that the share-o is for the shared right of way. Bicycles are using this the same way as vehicular traffic and we're educating those motorists about-
Maybe we were trying to be too concise and we can expand upon that.
Yeah, so that was just my concern when I first read it. And I had to read it a couple of times to try to really understand.
That's a pretty good red flag, that it probably needs a little more language and maybe, maybe some photograph examples as well.
And to the photograph example, you can barely see what this marking looks like here on this picture that you guys have on page four. Maybe like a picture of like the actual signage, what that looks like on the road would be helpful.
Will enhance.
Okay.
Yep, absolutely. We've had a section on the ATV, UTV, and I know you've spent a lot of time at council level talking about this. When it's all kind of said and done, the idea is to fold it in there. The maps are intended to include any identified routes, if there's specific routes that, but we don't have them at this time.
The legislation as passed was all city routes, or all city roads are routes. If you just have a sentence there that says that, I think that's sufficient. I don't know if we need to say anything else about it because I feel the ordinance was pretty clear.
Okay. Not much change on the public transportation, paratransit and truck and water transportation. We do review the long-range plans from the state level. By and large, most of the big improvements have been made around you. And the one we really need to talk about is, here is the County A. Where is it? CP, here we go. So the last plan, obviously being a number of years old, and the transportation plan makes specific recommendations for that County A, County V area. The last comprehensive plan and the pedestrian plan and the transportation plan talk about pedestrian improvements on the bridge of A, the realignment of A itself. Well, that bridge was just reconstructed. So, and it did not include any pedestrian treatments. And it wasn't realigned with what the city had envisioned. Now, that would have taken some right-of-way acquisition and impacted some whole, some properties out there. That bridge is probably not going to get touched for 50 years.
So my question here on that basis is, the improvements used noted still need to be done? Is who is responsible for those ultimately? And should we say that here? Point the finger somewhere if it's not us. I don't know. That was just my thought when I was reading it.
You could certainly point out that the city's plan had made these recommendations and the state, the state didn't review, didn't view that project as a reconstruction. They viewed it as a rehabilitation. And so when it's a rehabilitation, they're just replacing what's there.
Right, so I mean, we do need to say, like, next time this comes up, the city needs to try to get this done again.
I'm looking at Mr. Haley and Mr. Drescher because we've had a lot of conversation about the AV intersection and some of the safety issues there over a number of years and most recently because it's development that's happening there in recent months. I don't think that the plan that was, that's highlighted in the transportation plan is something that you want to get away from. I mean, I think you still want it, but the likely of it happening, it's certainly not going to happen in the life of this plan. Question is, should it stay on the radar screen? As it's probably a better improvement, but you're realigning A and-
Well, this is the problem of talking about things that are never going to get done, right? But I think it is significant that we do need pedestrian improvements. And that's a terrible intersection, we all know that. So I think it's worth it to keep this in here, at the very least, and say, you know, this is the reconstruction that was done, the improvements the city asked for, were not done at that point in time. The city will continue to seek ways in the future to improve this area.
Okay, that we can absolutely do. I just didn't know how you want us to tackle it. There are probably better, like, controls that could be implemented at that intersection, whether it is, boy, that coming over the, heading southbound over the bridge is just such a problem, right? And you have such a steep grade, like, suddenly you put a light in, a signal in, and it's icy and someone starts sliding through it. There's a lot, it's a lot of issues associated with that. But having in common that this should be explored with the county and the state as to ways to improve the safety of that intersection can absolutely be added. Yes.
I'm not saying this should be in the plan. I'm just curious, as long as we're talking about that intersection and the potential improvements with the business going in there, has, was there ever any sort of a study done about making that a roundabout instead of just a traditional intersection?
It has been, I'll say, informally mentioned, it has not been studied. So I would say greater study is necessary. This plan should indicate greater study of safety and whatever corresponding improvements should happen because the bridge is now not moving. So something else is going to have to be evaluated there.
Not to, not to get two weeks ahead of ourselves, but with the, is the plan for the hotel going in there, is it still planning just to add a turn lane in there?
They are working diligently with the county, Public Works and Engineering on making improvements to the, to that section of the corridor to have turn lanes and I'll say a bypass refuge, pavement marking type stuff, because it's a pretty wide area. So they are looking to make something happen that will help part of that area. It does not address the intersection itself. It would still say be stop controlled in east-west and free flow north-south. So again, probably more evaluation is necessary, especially, and I put if, the hotel happens there and other, you know, you get a hotel and suddenly other things want to be near hotels. So, you know, if more development happens in that area, likely something's going to need to be done in that intersection. So goals, objectives and policies really didn't change wholesale here. The respondents to the survey made it very clear that we need to prioritize, in their opinion, bike ped facilities, connectivity as a whole through the community. The need to get away from being auto-oriented only really came out from the public survey. I'm looking you to make sure that we're, that you have a certain level of agreement to that because we've painted a little more with that brush here. Trying to prioritize roadway coordination with Jefferson County. You know, obviously your major roads are generally county roads. I mean, 89, of course, is a state road, but, you know, V and Madison, you know. So policy-wise, reviewing and updating the transportation plan. We do put in here reviewing plans biannally. That doesn't mean rewriting them biannally, but looking at them at a, to a certain level, whether that's Public Works going through and looking at some of these plans. They really haven't been refreshed since they were written. They are good policy documents that help guide us when we're doing development. But they, we put in biannally, maybe you feel that's too often to give them a once-over to make sure they're still holding true. Maybe it's every five years. And it's, again, we are not mandating, do an entire new study here, but making sure that they still kind of have their finger on the pulse of what's happening. Thoughts on that?
I had an overall comment for these policies. And it's that nine and 10 specifically were a little bit redundant with five. And I think there's a way to take policy number five, oh wait, was it five or six? Hold on. Let me look at my notes. I'm sorry. Because five was something else. Talks about driveway access. Maybe just nine and 10 then can be combined.
Okay.
And just talk about, like, you know, logical, efficient road improvements in collaboration with surrounding municipalities and, you know, the county with that, all of those jurisdictions. I had something about five, but that doesn't actually apply, so I don't know what my note was.
We'll revisit. For you. Again, clarifying language on connectivity, reiterating connectivity because that's what we heard from the, through the survey. And then we get into the programs and recommendations. And many of them still hold true from before, been implementing them over time. I don't think they should, they should go away in that regard. Clarifying some of the language. We talked about the street, those key street corridors. 89 having been reconstructed is a different animal than it was at that time about the needs for it. Again, still a priority is connecting CP Avenue down to 89. That hasn't gone away. Mulberry Street was recently reconstructed. We have a note about the County A issue when Mulberry transitions into A, so we'll revisit that. County V adding on-street bike lanes, at some point it's going to get reconstructed. We do want to make sure that that type of language is in the plan. So when the county's reconstructing that, that you're able to say, we have an expectation here that these types of facilities are included. Madison Street can be an important bike route. Does anyone feel that it, I know it gets a lot of traffic because it's the major north-south road over on the east side, but-
I have mixed feelings about that. Because I lived on the corner of West Madison and, what was it, College or whatever? It's right behind the middle school and the truck route traffic is significant. To put a bike lane there, for my own child, I would feel is dangerous. Is there, what's the next street up? Would you take- Would you take like Fremont and Oak as the parallel street just north of that? Is it Oak or Washington? Maybe there's a parallel street you can take that's not West Madison that would put you up by the middle school in Arlac. It's not as direct, but it would still get you there on a bike and it's probably safer ultimately. Those are just my personal feelings.
Sure. Should, should maybe some language be added about just evaluating, future evaluation on where those significant kind of north-south, east-west routes should be? Again, I go back to, not every road has to be treated equally, but some level of study. And I, and I don't have an expectation that it's going to come out of here, but would you be comfortable with more language to that effect about further evaluation? About which routes really should be prioritized as?
Yeah, I would be. It's just that portion of West Madison between Main Street and Church Street, I said College, but Church Street is so busy with trucks.
Okay.
I feel like it would be really dangerous to direct bike specifically there.
There aren't, not every route is intended to like, take your five or six-year-old on, right?
Of course. Adults would do it too, but it just seems like it's so busy in that little section. And again, that's my personal experience, having lived on that corner.
We'll add language about, you know, while it's a direct route, it, based on its current usage, it may not be, it should be evaluated on whether or not it's kind of the best for, for bike. So... Highway A South of the city, there was a realignment that was completed by the county. They took out one of the curves. The city's transportation plan really calls for realigning that entire roadway. Sorry, here. Go back to this on the south end. It really was calling for County A to really turn eastward and line up with Mud Lake Road and this section being removed or being local rather than county road. That's the transportation plan. That intersection, I remember, if you remember before it was reconstructed, the A-89 intersection was pretty bad. It's certainly better now. I wouldn't, I wouldn't argue that it's perfect, but it is absolutely better than it used to be. But that's what's in the, the transportation plan. So, to have A kind of move into, to Mud Lake Road. Thoughts? Maybe, how much of us, how much do you want us to show from the transportation plan on this review? Would you rather us reference in the transportation plan? Do you feel this makes it more confusing, less confusing? It's a cointosh, right? I mean, it's... I'll go back to the transportation plan.
What do you reference on? What did?
I think it's important to show the collector routes on here. And if this, I think we should be reflecting what's in the transportation plan, even though we say the transportation plan probably needs some warming over. This map can always be edited again in the future.
Okay. So, your specific question is, should we show that planned collector road from A to Mud Lake?
Yes, because it's in the transportation plan.
Yeah, then I think we show it.
But again, a recommendation from this, of this document is, let's revisit the transportation plan and the pedestrian plan. If just to warm them over, right? We've, we've added some language from the respondents, kind of some of the numbers to support what's being said in the plan, so it's clear. People who participated in the, in the survey said, maybe it's not as accessible as they'd like. So... This is just a commentary on the block length. Did you want to touch on that? I, I think the crux of this, we don't really, do we really need to get into like the specifics of 1,100 feet or 600 feet or blocks? And when you read this, the subdivision code goes in and it talks about block length, et cetera. If you're going to have long blocks, that you should have mid-block pedestrian crossings. We try to avoid really long blocks just for road network, et cetera. This gets very specific about certain things, and I don't know if it needs to be that way.
That was a general comment I think we've taken from other provisions is to try to make more general statements versus, versus these very specific, you know, something that might end up in, in a different document or ordinance or...
Because you're just going to be going over it twice anyways. Why just have it as a general? Because obviously, whatever you develop, you're going to be looking at it, or you should have.
Yes. Rather than having like a specific number called out in here, really the goal is to be mindful of, what's good for a car may not be very good for a pedestrian or bicyclist when it comes to block length, et cetera. Again, adding more, that, comment from the surveys on these issues to provide a little more support as to why they're in the document. Looking for... There was an issue about... Let's see, we've... There was an issue about the length of cul-de-sacs and use of cul-de-sacs in here. And the cul-de-sac length is very limited in the subdivision code. Only to a few hundred feet, 300 feet, which is really short. And that was by design. Long cul-de-sacs lead to problems for provision of services, fire safety, life safety. Also, developers try to use them maybe where they shouldn't be using them, right? Because cul-de-sac lots sell for more. But we want an interconnected road network. So, the plan here is, through the subdivision code, is that we recognize you're going to need cul-de-sacs to serve certain properties. It's going to happen, right? Because they, you can't get a loop road or whatnot. But we don't want to see thousand-foot cul-de-sacs. And so, I want to make, there's a comment in here on cul-de-sac length, et cetera. And I want to make sure that we're still on that same page of limiting the length of cul-de-sacs. Because, because it will come up with developers. Public Works and Fire Department, they're all very clear in what they want. But I want to make sure that you are going to be the ones that are going to be reviewing Platts and such, that you are still supportive of that.
Yes. Yeah.
I think those were the big things. Oh, yeah. I think those are the big things tonight. Just double checking to make sure we didn't miss anything here. Oh, Brian had some comments and some things that are in the corp and bike and ped plan. I think we, I think there's a lot of places we talk about connectivity and bike and ped facilities and it may be a little too bludgeoning, but...
I think it's okay having all those references in there. That's something that's come out of the survey that's clearly important. I think it's okay if we touch on them a couple of different times, a couple of different places, even if it's repetitive or browbeating.
The last one, this plan recommends requiring bicycle facility improvements as a standard transportation improvement with the same standing as a public street. So... It's a great, bold statement. Is that how we feel? Are we designing all roads with pedestrians and bicyclists in mind? Are we to ensure, the takeaway is, when new roads are, are brought forward by developers, you know, is that what we are pushing for? Is it too harsh a statement?
Well, I just think you got to watch a little bit how the park, park dedication happens where, you know, you're forced to dedicate all this parkland and we can't take care of all this parkland or historically could not. So, you should, you should leave, leave them something, an out, like a fees in lieu of... It's, it's fine to do it wherever you can, but, you know, this, this forcing stuff down people's throat most of the time doesn't happen. It's better to renegotiate and use, it'd be a great way to use resources to get other things accomplished, like, like the senior center.
Mr. Wolf, for this specific sentence, I think instead of requiring, you could either say... Well, all right, this plan recommends requiring consideration of bicycle facility improvements as a standard transportation improvement. Because it may not be necessary, like, you may not need it on a cul-de-sac on the southern side of the Brookstone Development, right? So, like, you wouldn't require a bike lane there, for instance. But we should consider how the bike lanes and bike paths are impacted as they're added, as sections to the city are added on.
So, we're going to focus on this as a part of new infrastructure design and I'll say context.
Also, when you get done the last part of this, you use the term greenway. What is that?
Boulevard. Again, this comes from the last plan and, I mean, I think we all say boulevards are great, but it's a lot to maintain. You got to mow them. It's a lot of land that developers don't want to give up. You know, if a, but, you know, sometimes greenways can be used as a good connection between developments and such, so they should be explored. I, I think we can change some of that language and how it's used, right? I, I think going back to context, et cetera would be important. Let's see here. Safe routes went away and it's now the TAP program, which you certainly participate in actively for, for multimodal facilities. I think that was really, that was really it. And you get to the maps. Do we feel that there was anything that came out of the survey or focus groups that hasn't been effectively addressed here from a recommendation perspective? Do you feel... That... We tried to trim where, where we felt practical to, to make it a little more concise. I'm hoping we don't feel like that's too concise. And we can certainly come back with a more cleaned up version. But... The takeaway again from the surveys was, let's make sure that we do have connectivity, that people can get from one end of the community to the other without having to take a car. Making sure neighborhoods are still connected for, for vehicles. But that multimodal improvement shouldn't take a, shouldn't be a secondary item. That it, it is expect, it is expected by your, your respondents. And keep in mind, most of your respondents were younger families, so...
We've covered here most of my comments. I had a couple additional ones if we could go back.
Of course, yeah.
On page two, where we talk about bridges, we say there are no motor vehicle bridges. And this is going to hand on your very technical definition of the word "bridge." But is not the, the road that goes over the Mill Pond Channel to Rock Lake on Ferry Drive, is that a bridge or no?
I will double check with, what's that? It's a, I'll double check with Dwayne on how they categorize it.
I don't know. That's why I'm asking. So, that just came off in my mind, though.
Microsoft Word changed the way you put comments in. If you don't like... That's all right. We can, we can come back with that. It's, it's, I think...
Dustin, can you hear me?
Yes.
That is a, that is a culvert at this time. But it could potentially, if it was reconstructed, to allow larger, uh, boating facilities could be looked at as a bridge in the future.
Okay. So, that helps. I didn't know how we were defining "bridge." That was one thing I had. I just had a couple other ones. Um, let me check. On page three, this is the opposite problem of what we had in the last chapter, where when we talk about multi-use paths, we discuss the Glacial Drummond Trail and the access on South Mean, but we forget about the access from CP Ave. So, I'd like to add that just for continuity purposes. We talked about Sherrows. On page five, the Truck and Water Transportation section, since we have no water transportation, I would just take that out of the heading.
I think we have to have a comment on it just because of a statutory thing.
Oh, okay, sure.
Yeah, it's a, there's a guidance document.
Statutory, even if something doesn't apply to the community, you have to still address it.
Sure. Unless we start a ferry going across Rock Lake. Okay, that's fine.
There's a business opportunity, Mr. Holman.
Somebody?
Circle the lake tours.
What's that?
Circle the lake tours.
Oh, yeah, there you go.
See the pyramids.
Going through, I think we've covered most of it.
From the fire station to Korth Park. On map four B?
Yes, sir.
Is the intent for that bike path that goes across the freeway, is that supposed to be some sort of a pedestrian access or are they just going to go fast?
So, let's, let's talk about that real quick. It is in the transportation plan to have a, a bridge, a pedestrian bridge crossing the interstate somewhere, it is shown.
Okay.
It is known that we do need, when the development happens on the other side, there's going to need to be a, a separate bike ped crossing. Neither the bridge, the 89 bridge over 43, and as we talked about, the County A bridge, had pedestrian facilities in them. It's not really a big deal when you don't have any development up there, but when development happens. So, it is in here as something that is still planned for. It is in the transportation plan. If you drive through Zaki County, there's the interurban bridge crosses I-43. You know, there's a number of them, obviously, in, in Dean County, going over the Belt Line. Again, you're going to need something in the future. Feel it should still be shown here, including the plan. If you decide to go after grants 10 years down the road, it's also something we shouldn't lose track of. And it was something that was actually added to TID 7, should money ever be available, so that it could be an expenditure item. But when the interurban one was done in Wazaki County, they got a grant from the state for like a million dollars to do it, so...
So, I've never actually paid attention driving on 89, crossing on the bridge, crossing I-94. Are pedestrians that do cross it literally walking in the shoulder of the road?
Technically not allowed to cross it.
People do.
I get that, but you're not allowed to.
But they are walking on the shoulder.
There are no designed or approved bike or ped facilities.
All right. That's what I thought we were saying, but I've never walked.
That doesn't mean, like you said, people absolutely do it, but no, you're technically not allowed to. You can probably bike on it in the lane, but you can't walk across it.
Yeah.
And the guardrail's only 30 inches tall. You could just fall off your bike onto the interstate.
There's a, yeah, it's not designed for it at all, so...
With the way the bridges currently are, would you have to expand the width to add? Would you need a 60-inch sidewalk? Do you have to literally expand?
It would probably be more than 60 inches, probably more so. And then, again, if it's reconstructed, they might be able to add on or put something immediately next to.
Hang on.
Hang on, marsupial type, yeah.
Yeah, hang on the south sides of the bridge beams.
So, again...
Yeah, literally, hang on, no.
So, yeah. Thank you for highlighting that, Mr. Smith. But yes, it has been planned.
So, and... Sorry, and kind of getting to what... Sorry, and kind of getting to what Mr. Grady was talking about an hour ago. With that pedestrian bridge, is that something that if we start going with North Side development, is that, do you think that would be one of the first things that would need to go in? Or would that be a reactionary thing that would go in much further towards the end once development's already there?
I think when you start getting development up there, you're going to be, you're going to be pursuing grant funds for it to connect it, because it's very easy to point at the state improvements, the bridges that are not designed for bike ped facilities, to say it's inadequate, and we need another, a different safe route.
Is that something that, that the city should be exploring grant opportunities for that now? To build a bridge that will eventually be used?
Too hard to make the argument when there's nothing up there yet. But when you start having stuff up there and you're saying, look, we're getting development now. We need, we need to vault this up to priority list, right? You're going to have to look at, where is it going to go? And, again, I can't tell you how it's going to have some fears in the median and two spans, you know. It's not going to be an inexpensive proposition, so yes, you'll be looking at grant monies. It needs to stay in the transportation plan, it needs to stay in this plan saying, we know this is going to happen, that. I may argue that we should probably add some purple lines up A and up eighty-nine to say, we need pedestrian facilities on these locations.
Yeah.
If you're comfortable with that, we will add that.
Yeah, I would say so, because if, when the opportunity comes up, that improvements are made, then yes, for pedestrian and bike.
Okay, we'll add those.
I'm also still a firm believer, if we, at the end of the day, if these guidelines are relaxed some, you could get so much more done. Let's just say somebody's cul-de-sac is five hundred feet too long. We could say, in lieu of not having that happen, and you can end up with your eight, eight additional lots at two million dollars, you need to put either a bike, a bike lane on that, on that road, or a boulevard to the entrance of the development, so that you have some, you know, you have something in lieu of. You could get so much done if you negotiate it. That's how the real world works, you know, there's, if you get, you get something that can't be done, usually it can be done, if there isn't a hard line saying no.
So while it is spelled out in the code for specific reasons why it's limited to three hundred feet, because the subdivision code is its own item under, in the municipal code, it doesn't, zoning has very specific statutory exception processes. The Plan Commission and the Council can grant exceptions to the subdivision code as a part of an approval process. So that negotiation, I will say, exists if you feel that it's, a five-hundred-foot cul-de-sac is necessary, but for that, you need to do these other things as well.
Right, exactly. Because many years ago, we gave staff the ability to follow the code and handle the negotiation and bring those projects back to us complete, rather than us having, oh, well, I'll just bring it up because it's real, picking the color of the brick on McDonald's. So it, you know, this would be a much better, much better way to have a result, an end result.
Yeah, the subdivision code absolutely gives the Plan Commission and the Council that power. That's what we had for you tonight.
I had one, just one other general comment. Very general. Is it appropriate to say in the preamble or first portion of this paragraph or chapter, excuse me, the Public Works Board has been taking up the bike path issue? Because they've been working on it this year? Or is that too specific for?
I think there are places where we can highlight that it, the Public Works Board has been working on addressing this issue in conjunction with the fact that it's a priority to the people responding to the survey.
Sure, okay, that's fine. That was my last thing, so, thank you.
We can add that. Other odds and ends?
Plan Commissioners, do you have anything else that you want to hear about, ask about, or comment on so far, or this evening?
Motion?
Say?
You want a motion?
If you would like to, if you like to, yeah, you may.
So move. Mr. Coots will second.
Ah, it's been moved by Dr. Mason, seconded by Mr. Coots to adjourn the meeting. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Anyone oppose? We're adjourned.
Thank you, everybody.